Thank you to all who are here virtually. And also, we want to thank Metro IT and MHCC staff for, again, coordinating our virtual meetings. So we want to call to order the Metro Historic Zoning Commission meeting of July 15, 2020, out of an abundance of caution and pursuant to recommendations from federal, state, and local health agencies regarding avoiding group gatherings due to the COVID-19 coronavirus. This meeting is a teleconference meeting. Advance public comments where possible through email, mail, and voicemail. We will also take live comments via phone. And please take down this number. It is 629-255-1911. Please do not call until the project you wish to speak about is announced. Commissioners, I will now take roll call. And when I say your name, please say present. Vice Chair Stewart?
Present.
Commissioner Fitz?
Present.
And I want to welcome Commissioner Amina Johnson.
Thank you. Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Mahal?
Present.
Commissioner Price?
Present.
All right. We have quorum. And the commission must vote on the record that the COVID-19 pandemic requires us to hold a telephonic meeting as permitted under the Governor's Executive Order Number 16. So entertain a motion to hold this electronic meeting. And I see Commissioner Jones.
Sure. I move that the meeting agenda constitutes essential business of this body, and meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 outbreak.
Thank you. And a second by Commissioner Mahal.
I second that motion.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll now take roll call for the motion. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yay.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Call.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
And Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay. Before we move on to our agenda, we have had another sadness in our preservation historic community, and we want to recognize the passing of the Metro Historic Commissioner of Bob Allen. And so if we could just take just a moment to acknowledge the many unbelievable work that he has done, specifically in the Bellevue area, and just his presence in our community, we want to hold that up for condolence to him, his family. Thank you. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via a statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve 2 minutes as a rebuttal of public comment. We ask that the public keep their comments to 2 minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for 5 minutes as a representative of a group or organization. We have not, at the moment, received any such request for this meeting. During the public hearing, staff will first read any comments received in writing. At the moment, no voicemails were received. Finally, members of the public calling in will be heard. Ms. Ziegler, are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
Yes. We've proposed that Design Guideline consolidation project be deferred until we can meet again in person, and the applicant has requested deferral of 1228 Fourth Avenue North.
Commission, is there any discussion about these revisions? Please raise your hand. If not, I do not see. Entertain a motion to accept the revised agenda. And I see Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner Jones, I move to approve the revised agenda.
I recognize Commissioner Price.
Second.
All right. We have a first and a second. Are there any other discussions? If not, we will call a roll for the vote. And as I say your name, again, we know the protocol. Vice Chair Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And before we, again, go forward, Ms. Ziegler, are there any council members who wish to speak?
There are no council members at this time.
Okay. Now is the time for the public to call in if someone would like an item removed from the consent agenda. The number is 629-255-1911, which is also on the screen. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda will be moved to the end of the agenda. And Ms. Saget will be preventing our consent agenda.
So the first item on the consent is approval of the administrative permits issued for the month. An outbuilding with a setback determination is proposed for 2809 27th Avenue South. 1403 Beechwood is for an addition and detached accessory dwelling unit. 1005 Acklin is a request for an addition. An addition and outbuilding are proposed for 1822 Fifth Avenue North, and an addition is proposed for 1515 Holly Street. Staff recommends approving these projects along with their applicable conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the consent agenda or any to be removed? Please still raise your hand. Robin, have we received any requests over the phone?
There are no callers.
Okay. Seeing no hands and no call-ins, entertain a motion from the commission. I see Commissioner Jones.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. I see Vice Chair Stewart.
I second the motion.
Okay. There's a first and a second. We'll now take the roll call for the motion. Vice Chair Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now is the time for the public to call in at the number that is on the screen. I'll also say that, 629-255-1911. And this is regarding the 1210 Stratford, and Mr. Alexander will be the presenter.
You see here 1210 Stratford Avenue. In August of last year, the MHCC approved the proposal for infill and an outbuilding on a vacant lot at the time. After receiving approval and issuing a historical commission permit, the applicant revised the design, and they neglected to submit the new drawings for review. The most noticeable difference in the plans for the house from what was approved and the revised plans is in the window pattern. The changes, these changes are relatively minor, and staff finds that they still meet Section 3G of the Design Guidelines. Staff often administratively approves revisions like this from an approved design if they are minor and do not increase the height or width of what was approved. With the revised plans for the outbuilding, the changes, there were changes to the first story door configuration and to the location of the dormer. Staff finds that these changes would also meet the Design Guidelines. The plans, again, the approved plans and then were revised, show changes to the ridge height and eve height. These changes, increasing the height of the eaves to 10 feet and the ridge height by approximately 5 inches, would also have met the Design Guidelines. But unfortunately, what was built is actually 1 additional foot taller than even these plans show. The eve was built with a height of 11 feet above the floor level, whereas the Guidelines limit eaves on 1 and 1/2 story garages or outbuildings to 10 feet. The ridge height as built is 24 feet 6 inches from floor to ridge, which is 6 to 8 inches taller than that of the house from floor to ridge. The Guidelines permit outbuildings to be up to 25 feet tall, but they do not, they cannot exceed the height of the house. The applicant has proposed a correction. They would extend the length of the exposed rafters, bringing the end of the rafters, the bottom of the rafters, down to an appropriate height of 10 feet. This would be appropriate, but it would not lower the ridge height, leaving it approximately 6 inches taller than that of the house's ridge from finished floor level. Staff recommends that the outbuilding is corrected so the eve height does not exceed 10 feet above grade at the front of the building, and that the ridge height is corrected to be no taller than that of the house. And with those modifications, staff finds that the project would meet the Design Guidelines for the Inglewood Place neighborhood conservation zoning overlay.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Is the applicant on the line? Would you like to speak?
Yes, I'm here. This is Peggy Newman.
Go ahead, and please state your address as well.
1306 Belmont Park Court, Nashville, Tennessee 37215.
Thank you.
Well, I'm hoping that we can look at the topo and the slope of this lot and see how it slopes so high in the back and how far we are from grade on the main house. And my understanding is that we're 6 inches taller than is allowed. But once the grade is all put back and we drop the eve heights to 10 feet, I'm hoping that we can find some work around the 6 inches so they don't have to tear the roof off the house and rebuild it off the garage. I'm sorry, we're just talking about the garage right now. And when you take into consideration how far off the topo, the grade that the main house is in the front, it's like 28 feet on that right corner. So also, the topo, the slope of the lot in the back left corner is what caused the house to be raised, I believe, because it was just, it's sitting right on the grade in that back left corner. And I think there was just some human error and also in some confusion about what was allowed. Since it was a story and a half, I think they thought that they were allowed to go to the 17-foot eve height, and they're well under that, but there's still a foot taller on the 10-foot regulation. I'm hoping we can find a solution.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Newman. We'll hold on that, and if we have any public comment, you can address that as well. Ms. Ziegler, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. All right. So at the moment, we will, just with the applicant is online, commissioners, do you have any questions at the moment for Ms. Newman? Please still raise your hand. All right. I don't see anything at the moment, so we will close public hearing on 1210 Stratford, and commission will discuss. Commissioner Mahal?
Yeah. Yeah, I've got a question. How was the builder confused about how tall to build the garage? Could you review that with me again, please?
That question to Sean Alexander. Or to you?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I think it'll have to be for Peggy. Yeah. Okay. I don't know that I can answer that question. Maybe, Melissa, could you show the photo that's of the garage? Yeah.
Did you?
I mean, I can't speak to what the builders.
Did you have any conversation with Ms. Newman on that?
No. I mean, it all sort of just was noticed after the fact during an inspection that it was taller than it was proposed.
Commissioner? Commissioner? And whoever is on the phone, please put that on mute.
Yeah. I just didn't know.
Would you like the applicant to address your question?
Yes, please.
Okay. Ms. Newman?
Yes. Sorry. I'm sorry. That was my phone, of course.
Okay.
I thought we had muted all of them. The question is about the confusion on the ridge height?
Yeah. 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 Did they consult with anybody from Historic Zoning at all about building in this area that has overlay?
They're here right now, the builder and the developer. I think they just got the permits. I believe that this was their first time in Historic, the very first time they've ever done anything in Historic. And I thought, I think they just thought that they had a, just a two-story, they had a story and a half, but they thought that since there was a second, a living space on the second floor or a space on the second floor, that they were actually in the other category where they were considered a two-story. I think it was, you know, a complete mistake that, again, the 6 inches is what we're talking about. What is that?
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. That's me, too.
Any other questions? Or a motion? I think we're not quite there yet, but it is a bit of a complicating issue. Yes, Commissioner Fitz?
I guess in looking at this, I realize, so we're measuring, we're measuring from the finished floor to the ridge line of both the garage and the house, and that's what we're comparing, and that's where we're 6 inches over. I guess, and I realize that that does not meet our requirements. If the case, I guess if this had been presented that way as built, this is just a question to the other commissioners, is it something that we would possibly, you know, consider differently since it is setback further from the street? You're not going to really see the ridge lines in comparison to each other based on the distance back from the house and from the street. So is that something, for 6 inches, is that something we could, would have considered, you know, differently in reviewing it initially? And is it something? I think personally, it's something I would be, I don't, these cases are always tricky because, you know, it's really hard to, it just puts us in a really difficult position when you've built something wrong and it doesn't meet the guidelines that we're asked to enforce. But that being said, I might be willing to make a concession for the 6 inches if they did extend the eve line down. Those are just my thoughts, and I'm curious what the other commissioners think.
I know we have guidelines, and it's, this is tough now having to go retro. Yes, Vice Chair?
So, you know, this is something that we typically do not forgive errors that are made out of either ignorance or intention in that we can't determine which one was which. I think in so many cases, the people want to take the things higher to be able to get more living space. That doesn't seem to be the case in this. If it was more than 6 inches, I would be less inclined to agree with Commissioner Fitz, but I think with this situation, it does appear from the photograph that the grade in the back was higher and that they may even now have trouble with water in that garage at lower level. And so I'm more inclined on this one to give forgiveness, even though it does not meet the Guidelines. But because of that grade in the back, I would be willing to look at this as a special exception.
Commissioner, Vice Chair, are you specifically saying just to the 6 inches? Or how about the 12-inch difference on the other ridge height?
I think the eve should be brought down to the 10 feet. It would just be for the ridge height.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Commissioner Price?
Yeah. This is a question for Sean. Sean, could you address the issue of grade in the rear and whether or not that is factored into the staff recommendation? I know we've had conversations about this frequently, and that grade can be taken into account. Why or why not was that taken into account in the way that Commissioners Fitz and Stewart just mentioned?
The grade certainly does rise up going towards the rear. Melissa, again, could you show maybe the first slide that shows the house and garage together? Sorry. It does, you can see, I mean, just in the house alone, it's four or five blocks at the front, and then the back porch is pretty much just walks out straight to grade, and then it continues to slope up. To the extent that I think the front of the garage apron opens out right onto the driveway, but then the, sort of the back end of the garage is actually cut into the grade because that does continue to go up. So I think what Commissioner Fitz is suggesting may make sense here. There's not an alley at the rear, so you only, if it were, if you were entering the garage off the back, you probably wouldn't see that much, the garage door in the same way because, just because it wouldn't have a garage door. But it's much more noticeable that there's that large space above the garage door because the garage door faces the front, again, because there's a grade and because there's no alley, which is rather unusual.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Jones?
Yes. Yeah, looking at these photos and hearing the other commissioners and their thoughts, I am inclined to agree with them on this particular case. So, you know, in that vein, unless there's more conversation.
Commissioner, I see Vice Chair Stewart. I think he has his hands up, just checking in with him. Vice Chair?
She'll take it away. You can make a motion.
Madam Chairman, with respect to 1210 Stratford Avenue, I recommend a move to approve with the requirement that the eve height be brought down to not exceed 10 feet above grade. That's the motion.
Okay. All right. And are we addressing that 6-inch, too? Or are we clear on that as a motion?
By leaving out that, it does not make it a condition of approval, so it would, in essence, approve the 6-inch variance.
Okay. And I see Commissioner Fitz. There's a motion on the table. Is there a second to Vice Chair's motion? Commissioner Price?
Sorry. I was.
Commissioner Price?
Second.
All right. There's a first and a second. And are there any other discussions?
Commissioner Bell, I just wanted to point out that Commissioner Johnson has had her hand raised several times while others were being called on. I just want to make sure, make sure you had seen that.
Yes, I have just one clarifying question. Listening to other commissioners' comment, I understand this is just special exception based on the topography and not because it was built, so let's forgive. It's specifically based on this specific location and this specific condition. So therefore, even though as a policy-wise, the height of the outbuilding should not exceed the main building, but under the circumstances, we are giving the special exception, and it's our virtue. I just wanted to make you sure. That's what we are allowed to do and authorized to do.
Very good point and very well noted. Commissioners, I think we are, that's really clear, and we had a first and a second, and are we ready to take the call? Commissioner Mahal?
Well, I just want to make one comment. It's just my naivety about going about building and getting a permit. When you, when you get a permit, doesn't it, don't they tell you that you're in a conservation zoning overlay when you get a permit?
Believe so.
Well, then, why do the, why do the people that are building the property, why don't they realize that there's special zoning and they make sure that they follow the rules here? Because, you know, I'm willing to go along with the rest of commissioners and allow this, but it seems to me that the builders, it's, it's, it's important that when these builders go out and get these permits and they find out there's a zoning overlay, it seems pretty basic to me that you would find out what you're, what you're allowed to do under a conservation overlay. I'm just, again, worried about setting precedent. And again, I.
This is Robin. If you don't mind, I'll jump in because I think that's a good point to just educate for just a second, because you, as commissioners, don't necessarily know all that happens behind the scenes. And so we have different steps in the process to try to avoid things like this. And so we have different steps in the process to try to avoid things like this. Most of the times, the applicant, as you well know, that you speak to is the architect, not the builder. And so when they go in to get their building permit, that's usually the contractor. So in addition to giving the preservation permit to whoever our contact has been, we then have to sign off on that building permit as well. And we usually take that opportunity to tell the builder, you know, that you have this permit, it's the same as the codes permit, there's different sign offs. But that doesn't work as well right now during COVID since we are not at our development center desk. We're trying to do all that by email. And I think too that building permits do have these just maximums. The code zoning inspectors sometimes don't even look at plans for these single family homes. And so they're, they're used to working with those parameters and that they can do anything they want within those parameters, which isn't, of course, how the preservation permit works. So that's my guess. I don't mean to speak for the builder, but I imagine that's probably what happened here. But there are steps in place to try to prevent this to, as much as we possibly can.
Okay, those are all good points to have public awareness as well as when you are in the conservation overlays or historic overlays, to please take note of those guidelines also with base zoning and all the other codes requirements for those that are listening in publicly. I think that's been really good discussion. I just want to reiterate that we've had a, a motion and a second. We've had a really good discussion, and are we ready for the roll? Okay, I believe we are. All right, so when I call your name, please say yes or no. It's clearer over the telephone. Vice Chair Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhall.
Yes.
And Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Thank you. Now is the time for the public to call on 215 Broadway, and that number is on the screen, and it is 629-255-1911, and Ms. Warren will present the project.
Yes, 215 Broadway is a violation involving unpermitted changes to the storefront seen here on Broadway and the installation of ATMs on both the Broadway and Third Avenue facades. A permit was issued in 2014 and revised in 2016 involving storefront alterations to the Broadway elevation. The work was not completed as approved on the left, and an ATM was installed here. The ATM is not appropriate on this primary facade. Staff recommends that the doors and transoms be installed on the left side of the storefront as per the approved plans, which will also result in the removal of this ATM. The building has an L shape with a historic contributing building fronting onto 215 Broadway, which connects at the rear to the non-contributing building which fronts on Third Avenue South. An ATM was also installed along the Third Avenue elevation. Given several recent ATM violations, staff has reevaluated the interpretation of the appropriateness of ATMs and is recommending a revised interpretation. As a quick background, in 2004, the commission determined that ATMs could be appropriate if they were not on a primary facade and were located within an alcove where they did not puncture the facade or obscure any architectural features. Today, staff is recommending a revised interpretation as seen on your screen and outlined in the staff recommendation. If you approve the revised interpretation, the ATM on Third Avenue would meet the requirements of the new interpretation, but not the ATM on Broadway. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the current Broadway storefront configuration and ATM. Staff suggests that the storefront be reconstructed as previously permitted within 120 days. Generally, staff recommends 30 to 60 days, but due to the complications associated with COVID, we're recommending a longer correction period. Staff recommends approval of the revised interpretation regarding ATMs and consequently the ATM installed at the Third Avenue entrance.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Warren. Is the applicant on the line? And please state your name and address. Is the applicant on the line? Okay, we do not hear anyone.
I'm going to give, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm, I'm going to give the call in number again, just in case the applicant has a hard time because I do believe they wanted to be here today. That call in number is 629-255-1911. Again, that's 629-255-1911.
Did he just mute himself? Because that's him on the James Daniel, that's the applicant for this one, right?
James Daniel. Mr. Daniel, are you the applicant for this project? If so, unmute yourself.
Okay, I think we see you.
Yeah, is that better?
It is, and, and please again, state your name and your address.
My name is James Daniel. My address is 1361 Circle Crest Drive, Eddieville, Kentucky.
Okay. Do you have any comments on this, on your project?
Yes, the, the, on the Broadway side, on the left-hand side, that's not the finished product that we're aiming to do, but for Marriott, that's a, on the left door, extreme left door, that's an exit, a fire exit out of the hotel. And on the, on the right-hand side, the door there is a fire exit out of the basement.
Mr. Daniel, Mr. Daniel, can you hold on just one moment so the commission can see? Whoever's holding the, yes, thank you for the screen. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt, keep going.
And it's our intention to ask for a, a change. We were wanting a fancier entrance in there once we're finished working on the, the construction in the basement and it, for the rooftop patio. And this wasn't what, this isn't what we plan on eventually, eventually looking like. This is just temporary so that we've got secure doors into the hotel so that our customers don't have homeless people and stuff coming in through there. But we have a glass door like was permitted or that you all allowed us to have a permit for and a transom in there that's going to be put in there. It's just a matter of, we're not ready to do it right now with this COVID. We've kind of put everything on hold for just finance reasons, and, and our tenant on the right-hand side entrance has put the Irish pub on hold there too. So this is not the final product that we anticipate and will, if you want the ATM taken out, we'll certainly take it out. And, but I'd like to be able to keep those doors there so that we have a secure, a lot of homeless people stay in those entrances all up and down Broadway. And a glass door without us being actively used is just a, it's a way for them to break and get into the building, and I'm trying, we're trying to keep it. Marriott requested us get a secure doors on the, those two entrances. And, and they also, there's also people, not right now during the COVID, but there's people that are parking hot dog stands inside those entrances and cooking, and that's not accepted to be acceptable either. And we haven't put the canopy on it yet because we're waiting to see what the building, you know, when we're going to be able to get back and move in on the building. But it's, it's extremely, the occupancy right now is about 10% down there, so this is a pretty stressful period right now.
Understood, Mr. Daniel. We do, yes, we do sympathize with your, with your dilemma. Commissioner Stewart has a question?
Yes. So, so I actually have two questions, one for Jenny and asking if staff could read the proposed changes, but it sounds like the ATM is not going to be part of the future plan. Mr. Daniel, can you address how your proposed future changes address the ATM? And in addition to that, what, what kind of, you're talking about the economic hardship, and if you could, if you could state what your request would be from a timing standpoint on this?
Well, we've actually held up the architect that was getting ready to submit some stuff, and the entrance that we were wanting to put in there was a, it's an iron and glass entrance that is more time, it looks like an older entrance, and it was being built, supposedly was going to be built in, in China and shipped, and that's a pretty long lead time, it's like three, four months, but, but we'd like to be able to hold off right now until these things pick up a little bit. I don't mind taking the entrance out right away. And, you know, it's just, right now it's slow. And, but we've got an architect that was in the process of designing the basement and the Irish pub and that whole entrance. And like I say, we just put everything on hold temporarily until we see how this is going to pan out and when it's going to be picking back up again. But we fully intend to change the entrance to a more appropriate entrance like what was permitted. But it was, instead of aluminum glass, it was going to be, or it's going to be cast, or not cast iron, but yeah, cast iron and, and glass in the, the left-hand side entrances and the transom.
Vice Chair, do you have a second question?
Yeah, my second question was for, is for staff. If they could go through the proposed changes to the ATM regulations, as part of this requires us to accept the proposed recommendations, if they could go through those and sort of go into those and drill down a little bit more in those, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Right. Vice Chair, hold on just, just one moment. I think maybe we, because I believe that's going to have some discussion on that, and I don't, I want to be sure we're in protocol. So are there any other commissioners that want to ask our applicant a question? Because we will have maybe public comment, if, and then I need to close public comment, then we can discuss that. Is that okay, Vice Chair? Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Madam Chair, question is, I think applicant said he agree with the revision and leaving that door, steel door is not his intention, it's going to be a change. I think I, we, I understand that. So my question to the applicant is, staff recommendation is complete that revision within 120 days. So how far, how much more days would you need to comply with 120 days? Would that be enough? Or would you like us to consider a longer extension to comply with the plan?
I'd like to consider a longer extension because we just have no idea how long we're going to be shut down and, and right now, we're trying to preserve our, our employees as much as possible, and spending money on something that we don't have to spend on would be a real blessing right now.
Thank you. My next question is to the staff. So if the applicant is agreeing on compliance, would that be possible as an option for us to consider a longer than 120 days extension?
Commissioner, that would probably be a, a discussion with the commission. Is that, let me, yes, clarify that. Yes, thank you for that very good question. So it would be up to our commission when we do make the motion. Is that good for you, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, I'd clarify my question, thank you.
Very good, thank you so much. Any other questions to the applicant commissioners? All right, I see no hands raised. Ms. Ziegler, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, with no public comment and no rebuttal by the applicant, then I will close public hearing, and we will go into commission discussion, and we can bring back up the, how about the revision to, please bring that back up. Yes, thank you, the proposal. Commissioners, let's focus on that.
Commissioner Stewart, did you want me to read that into the record for you?
That would be great.
Okay, sure. And thank you, Melissa, for pulling it back up. I do not have it memorized. So the proposed changes are that ATMs may be appropriate in the following building locations. An alcoves are recessed entries on primary facades that are a minimum of six feet deep where the ATM will not require removal of historic features. The ATM may be freestanding or attached to a nonhistoric wall within the alcove or recess and should sit in a minimum of one foot from the primary wall. The width of the machine and any supporting structure shall not exceed three feet in width. Alcoves or recessed entries on secondary or rear facades that are a minimum of three feet deep and where the ATM will not require removal of historic features. And in the Second Avenue District, we would add language that First Avenue is considered a primary facade. The ATM may be freestanding or attached to a nonhistoric wall within the alcove or recess and should sit in a minimum of six inches from the side or rear wall. The width of the machine and any supporting structure shall not exceed three feet in width. ATMs are not appropriate in the following locations: Where they require the removal of historic features or wall material; Where they require the installation of an alcove or recess that is not historically appropriate for the building or the district; Or freestanding and open spaces such as surface parking lots or plazas. Where an ATM is appropriate, it should not have any signage beyond a simple sign on the machine itself and should not require additional lighting.
Okay, thank you again.
Yes, so the issue here, staff, is just you've got a problem with that, that ATM with the two doors on either side. If, if Mr. Daniel, when they rebuild, and when they have the money to build, and he said there's going to be a door in front of that, if, when he's ready to rebuild, and I've got a question about that too, because none of us know when this economic thing is going to turn around, but if he had a door in front of that ATM, would that ATM be okay to have with the, with the, that, that door on the left? If he puts another door up on the front closer to the street, would that ATM be okay to have there?
Excuse me, could I answer that?
Yes, please. Mr. Da, Mr. Daniel, we, the commission is in discussion, so maybe we'll call back, call on you, but for the moment, we are in discussion, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner, would you, oh, to, to, I'm sorry, to address to Jenny, okay?
Okay, sure, this is Jenny. So my understanding, Commissioner Mayhall, is that that is not an option on the table. Our issue with this elevation you're seeing in front of you is that it was not constructed according to the permit. I don't believe that they're intending to, at any point, put the doors in with the ATM behind it. If, if that were the case, then the ATM would be interior and we wouldn't be reviewing it at all.
Right.
So if they just take the ATM away, is everything all right?
No, we still have a violation here because it was not constructed according to the permit. So what we're looking is for them to revise this elevation so it matches what was permitted. The ATM is a separate issue.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
And, and also, in, in addition to that, it is the front facade, correct? So that would also be.
This is in Broadway and is the primary facade, correct?
Yes, so, so Commissioner Mayhall, that, that would not even apply because it would not be under a guideline for that.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Price?
Well, I guess I'm confused now because if we go back to the proposed new language, it says ATMs would be allowed on a primary facade as long as it's, the alcove is six feet deep. Is that correct?
It is confusing, Commissioner Price. Thank you. Currently, can we pop back to the 2004? Melissa, one slide back. Yep, there we go. So currently, they're not allowed on primary facades. So currently, that ATM is not okay. Currently, the elevation is not okay because it doesn't match the permit. So we, we have multiple problems here. So we have multiple problems here. And we are looking at revising the ATM interpretation. If, if you do approve revision, then the ATM on the Third Avenue elevation would meet the requirements. For the Broadway elevation, what we're asking is for them to revise that elevation so that it matches what was permitted. There is also an ATM there that currently is unpermitted and does not meet the current interpretation. Does that clarify at all?
Yes, but to my mind, that means if, so say they submit a revised application for this storefront and it does include that, that ATM, then it would potentially be approved by staff, correct? Because assuming that's six feet, it's, it's within six feet in an alcove.
I'll, I'll jump in, this is Robin. I, no, staff would not approve a recess that great. It would have to come to the commission and we would advise you not to, because it doesn't really meet the guidelines.
Okay, so it would probably, it would have to be brought out to, even with the other one, which is, I suppose is not six feet deep, and that's the difference?
Most recessed entries are around two to three feet deep. Six feet is very unusual.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Robin, I do have a question on the interpretation. So if, can you just please again put up the interpretation, not 2004, yes, the, I'm sorry, the, yes, the proposed interpretation. So if the proposed interpretation does not have specific to say front facade, do we add that? Or is because it's an addendum to the initial 2004 guideline? Can we, the mechanics of this all?
The issue is that the current storefront as constructed does not meet the guidelines and does not meet the permit. So if you approve this language as you see it now, the ATM would be inappropriate because the storefront should not recess as much as it does now. That's an error, that, you know, was constructed incorrectly. But this would allow for the ATM on the Broadway side. Does that make sense?
The Broadway side is front facade though.
I'm sorry, the Third Avenue side.
Third Avenue side, right, which is not the front facade.
Correct.
It is a bit confusing because we're looking at sort of changing our, our revising, not changing, revising the wording, however, it's specific to this project, so we, no.
If, if you agree to an interpretation, that is how staff will advise everybody from here on out.
Right. So this is not, I'm not going to say that, but set precedence for future ATM installations on Broadway.
I mean, like anything, you can look at every situation on a case-by-case basis. But this will give us staff and applicants some guidance.
Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
Madam Chair, so my simplest interpretation of this ATM location, I think if we interpret the way staff interpret, third, third location will be okay with the newest interpretation. However, no matter which way we look at it, Broadway ATM is not appropriate. And so I think a good thing is, if I heard correctly, the applicant is agreed to move ATM on the Broadway, I think I had that. So I think matter of us to consider is, at which point should we ask applicant to remove the ATM? Right away or when we, they are ready to construct and comply with the submitted planned entryway? So I think that's the question on the table for us.
Good, thank you, Commissioner Stewart.
So, so, you know, I'm, I'm an architect and reading the proposed language, to me says, I mean, it says ATMs may be appropriate in the following building locations. Alcoves or recessed entries on primary facades that are a minimum of six feet deep, where the ATM will not require removal of historic fixtures. If I was designing this building and I read this or a similar situation, it would appear to me that the ATM would be appropriate on the primary facade. I think that we may be ready to, to do a ruling on this specific case, but I'm certainly not comfortable at this point in time with the proposed language and would like to, for us to have some more deliberation on it.
This is Robin again, I'll jump back in. Again, the, the point of this is not to allow for entrances to be six feet deep. We don't think that would meet the design guidelines. So if there was a new building constructed or an existing building had a new storefront constructed, we would not be coming to you with a recommendation for approval of a deep recess like that. But there are some already in existence and one of them's coming up next. So that was the purpose of that.
Okay, so, so this would be only where there are existing alcoves or recessed entries that are six feet deep or greater?
Correct.
I, I lean to Vice Chair's statement about having more conversation about a proposed language change interpretation. We're always cautioned to make sure we have languaging correct because we don't want to put the commission in a place for a future where we are in conflict on what the intent is. So staff, can you, I know we've said this, but I'm, you know, wanting to be sure we're, we've got this down and yes, we're specific to this particular project.
The interpretation is not specific to this project. The recommendation is specific to this violation.
Commissioners, do you have any other comments? I haven't heard from a couple of you, so please chime in. Commissioner Fitz, I'm going to call on you. You have any comments?
Well, I, I agreed with Commissioner Johnson, kind of the decisions we have to make, and also agree with Commissioner Stewart about the language, kind of of the revised ATM statement. My, my thoughts are that, I realize this may, may have to do with the new language, but I, I think the ATM on Third Avenue, that seems okay to me. But for, for Broadway, I guess my recommendation would be to go ahead and remove the ATM and then we need to determine what time period we're okay for the replacement of the storefront.
Okay, thank you.
You know, just, I don't, I'm not even sure what, what we've done in the past. And I guess we're in a, we're in a situation we've never been in before. So what's, what seems fair there? We've got 120 days if we go to, you know, 180 or what's, what kind of, what kind of timeframe?
Yeah, let's, let's discuss that for a moment. Due to COVID and during this, you know, economic pandemic as well, let's, let's hear about what kind of timeline you all think might be reasonable. 120 days is probably not reasonable. So commissioners, do you have any thoughts on? Yes, Commissioner Mahal?
Well, you know, the, Mr. Daniels is saying that, you know, there's, it's financially untenable right now because of COVID. And so we don't know when that's going to turn around. We, we, so how can we really give a recommendation on something that, that we have no idea when they might be able to turn that around? And I, I just, I just, I just, I tend to, and so as far as the timing is concerned, you know, I, I don't know. I, I just don't know how we can come to terms with-
Let me pose this, let me pose this, and staff help us through this. If we say, and I'm just going to say, six months, does, does the applicant then can come say, I can't do this in six months? Can we again review it, bring it back?
Absolutely, and staff has extended deadlines in the past, you know, when reasonable things are happening. So whether it's four months, six months, whatever you want to put on it, we can always look at it at that time and say, no, it's still too soon, that's not reasonable. And if, and if staff is unsure, we'll just bring it back to you.
Right, and, and could we just have, you know, specific languaging in our recommendations to that effect? Yes. Commissioner Mahal, are you comfortable with that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, and any other commissioners comment on the timeline? And whoever makes the motion, please take note of, you know, Robin will help us with languaging, but just to make note of that. Commissioner Jones, have I heard from you yet? Oh, Commissioner, Commissioner Stewart, sorry, sorry. Commissioner Stewart's got, got his hand raised and I'll come back to you. Vice Chair, yes, sir?
So I'll go ahead and make, make a motion on this and then if Commissioner Jones has a comment, we can, we can add that in.
Okay, very good.
With respect to 215 Broadway and 110 Third Avenue South, I recommend disapproval of the current Broadway storefront configuration, including the ATM, finding that it does not meet Section 2 of the Design Guidelines for Rehabilitation, Section 3 of the Design Guidelines for New Construction. We would require that the storefront be reconstructed as previously permitted within 180 days. And that would be the, and that we would recommend approval, we would approve the revised, we would, we would approve the Third Avenue South entrance as is. What I've done there is left out the approval of the revised interpretation. I would like to, to have us work on that some more.
Vice Chairman, does that mean that the ATM on Broadway can remain for the 180 days or should come out immediately?
I, I can go either way, but I was, I was letting it stay in. I don't think they're going to make a lot of money off that in the next 180 days. I do think not longer than six months so that when this thing does turn around, they, they can't extend it beyond that. But that, that if it's still, you know, if we're still at loggerheads with COVID-19 in six months, then they could come back to staff for, for an extension.
Well said. There's a motion, is there a second? Commissioner Jones?
Second.
All right. There's a first and a second, is, and there any other discussions? If not, we will take the roll. Okay? Say yes or no, Vice Chair Stewart? Yes, Commissioner Mahal?
I have one point that I don't understand. On the Broadway side, the ATM, one of my questions was if they build, if they take that facade and move it closer to Broadway or put a door in there, would they still allow an ATM? And I thought that the answer was no, they would not. And so why are we letting them keep an ATM there when we're not going to let them keep it there when they, and evidently, I'm not understanding something correctly. But my understanding was that ATM was not going to be allowed whether they correct the Broadway facade or not. Could I have some clarification on that?
Vice Chair, I, I thought I heard you say that, but could you clarify the motion? I think you said that.
Yeah, they, the ATM won't be allowed in, in any situation. The only question is when they're required to take it out. So I, I don't have any problem with changing the motion to have them take it out within the next 30 to 60 days. I, I just left it in there because of the COVID situation that we currently have. I'm open to that.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Price?
Yeah, I would make the recommendation to accept Commissioner Stewart's motion with the exception that I believe the ATM needs to come out immediately. I, I don't think that that would be a huge financial hardship. And plus, I'm worried that other property owners up and down the district will see this ATM hanging around for who knows how long and think, well, it must be okay. They're allowed to do it, so I'm going to do one too. Does that make sense?
Yeah, good point. Commissioner Mahal?
I, I second that. Mr. Price said, I want the ATM out and I don't want it to have any kind of precedence set on Broadway because that's going to, as you know, going to open up a huge can of arms all up and down the street. So Commissioner Price, thank you so much.
Yes, very clear. So Commissioner, yes, Vice Chair Stewart?
So, so Madam Chair, I modify my proposal to require removal of the existing ATM within 30 days.
Okay, and do we still accept the, Commissioner Jones' second or do we redo a second?
Commissioner Jones, I, three second.
Okay, so noted, and we are, are we now ready to take the call? Okay, we, I think looks like we are. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Very good. That was a, a great discussion and I think I learned a lot from that, thank you so much. The next project is 305 Broadway, very similar. And now is the time for the public to call in and, which is on your screen, and I will say it, for the telephone public, 629-255-1911. And Ms. Warren will also present this project.
Do you hear me?
We hear you now, thank you.
Sorry, I'm having some connectivity issues. And the last case does impact this one, so let me just ask for clarification. I think I heard, but it was breaking up towards the end. The commission did not approve the revised interpretation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so number 305 Broadway is also a violation involving the installation of an unpermitted ATM. This ATM, as you can see, is located on the primary facade along Broadway, which does not meet the guidelines as we just discussed in the previous case. Therefore, staff recommends, if you can go ahead to the next one, since we did not approve the revised interpretation, staff recommends that-
Jenny, can you say that one more time? Please say that one more time, you're cutting out.
So staff is recommending that this ATM not be approved since you did not approve the revised interpretation. Did you hear me?
Yes, I thought you were going to read the rest of that, okay. Oh, are you done with your presentation, Ms. Jenny?
I am, I am done, yes ma'am.
Okay. We just had a little bit of a snafu over the connections there. Is the applicant on the line? Can you hear me? We hear you now. Yes, please say your name and address.
This is Kenny Winchell, home address 608 Watson Wood, Nashville. And obviously 305 Broadway is where the ATM is.
Okay, you have any comments?
I have just a very something brief that I, that I wrote down and all respect to you guys, I mean, I appreciate your time and, and listening to me. I respect very much what you guys do and what's best for Nashville. I've been in town for about 30 years and I've seen a lot of your good work. I own a few ATMs downtown. Unfortunately, it's been a really tough few months. That's the only one that's outside, all the others are inside of bars that are all closed down. It's been a little tricky. It's tricky for a lot of people, so that is what it is. I put that outside, not knowing that it wasn't allowed. There's other ATMs that are on Broadway that I guess they're grandfathered in. And I keep this one really clean and, and nice and I disinfect it and I, I take care of the sidewalk and I, you know, I always look after everything Broadway and, and it's a little bit different. Mr. Daniels is a super uber-nice guy, and he brought a great hotel downtown. This is a, kind of an alcove that goes in, you know, 15, 20 feet. Not the original. I think probably when NASCAR Cafe was there. That's probably who built it out. I don't know. It's an old building, but, but it's a little different. It's tucked back. It's on our property. It's a, it's a good service for people that, that do need cash, especially when there's a cover charge to get into Jason Aldean's or Luke Bryan's. It's right there. That being said, I respect what you guys do very much. I'll do whatever you ask me to do if I need to move it. I'm, hopefully, I can move it back. And talking to staff, it seemed like it was a different situation. I totally understand about other people putting ATMs out. I, I don't think there's really many opportunities for people to do that just with the way your laws are written and the way the street is. I think this is very different. I'll gladly move it back. But that being said, it's my only source of income right now. I mean, that's not a reason for your guys' decision. I mean, it, it, it isn't a great income, but it does help take care of myself and my 87-year-old mother. And I'm so careful with this COVID, and I don't know what the future brings. And, and I was on the marketing team for TC Restaurant Group with Zaldean's Luke Bryan, FGL House. But I was laid off there as well as everybody else. And, and that's all I have to say. I respect whatever you guys decide to do. I think, as Jenny and, and Paul tell you, it is a little different situation the way that, you know, that, that alcove is. But regardless, I, you know, I want to make this quicker rather than longer. You guys have a lot of important business to discuss. So whatever you guys decide to do, I will do. The longer I can keep it there or I can move it back would be better. But, but again, whatever you guys decide to do, and, and thank you, and God bless all of you.
Mr. Winchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to say, we do sympathize under these conditions. They are unprecedented, and we are all trying to navigate. And we do sympathize with your business challenge. So please know that.
Thank you.
Yes, and we, we thank you for working with the staff on this and continuing to do so. So for the moment. All right. Ms. Ziegler, do we have any comments on this project?
We do not.
Okay. If we do not, then we will close public hearing. And commissioners will have a discussion. Vice Chair Stewart, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please, sir.
I, I have a question for Jenny on this one. So the original recommendation assumed that we approved the staff recommended language. Since we did not approve that language on the prior case, then the staff recommendation is now for disapproval. It seems to me, in reading between the lines on all this, that staff felt like with the modification that they mentioned is relocating it one foot back, that they thought that this would be an appropriate location and appropriate setting. Could Jenny address, address that?
Sure. We, and that was why we, well, so do you mind hopping back to the recommendation? That's why we suggested the revised interpretation was because we were seeing several different ATM violations. And we were trying to think of a way that we might want to, to take another look at it. And so that's why we brought that before you. And we felt like if, if you had approved that interpretation, then this one could be, could be pushed back a little bit to meet that interpretation. Since you did not approve that interpretation, then this one does not meet the guidelines. It is on the primary facade. It is right on Broadway. So yeah, I mean, that was, that's why we wrote this recommendation the way we did, saying, well, if you had approved it, then yes, this one could be revised to meet it. But if not, then the ATM should be removed. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. It seems to me that, that since this is an existing opening in recess and that, that it's not a requirement that we change the guidelines to be able to approve this specific one. If they're extenuating circumstances with this one, we should be able to deal with this case and then continue to look at the guidelines modifications. Does that sound reasonable?
Certainly. You're always welcome to look at everything on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
Agreed, Vice Chair. Commissioner Mayhaw?
Yeah. Jenny, could you, could you go back to that, that site that talks about the revised interpretation of the, the law that you were trying to change? Let me look at that again, please.
Commissioner, that's an interpretation and it's not the law. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
I, I think I'd rather, I'd like to have another discussion about this at another time when we don't have a case in front of us. When I look at the picture of the one in front of Jason Aldean's, it looks like it's right on the facade. And, and answer me this. If, if we, if, if the gentleman moved it back further, how far back would he have to move it in order to comply with the current regulations? Or is that possible?
Currently, ATMs are not allowed. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Currently, ATMs are not allowed on primary facade. So currently, it is not permitted where it is.
And even if he moves it back further, there's no place on that facade that he could move it to that would comply with any of the regulations? Is that right?
Well, according to the current interpretation, staff could not approve it there. That's why we brought it to you. You have the authority to approve it on a case-by-case basis if you choose to do so.
Yeah. You know, I don't like the way it looks now. I'm just trying to figure out how far, if, if, if we agreed to have him move it back, where, where it would go, which, I don't know. Anyway, I'm just having, I have a problem with that ATM. I certainly sympathize with the merchants on Broadway with everything that they're going through. But that, that to me looks, looks not appropriate.
Commissioner Jones, did you have your hand raised?
Oh, yes, yes, no, I did. So I was going to, this might be for Jenny or Robin. Reading page four of the staff report for 305 Broadway. It talks, the big paragraph there talks about the 2004 legal opinion. And then that based on the 2004 interpretation, the commission then disapproved four ATMs on Second Avenue. Would, I mean, again, this, you might not know the answer to this question because you might not have the research, but in front of you. But would those, under the new interpretation that you're, you know, potentially proposing, would those four that were disapproved be able to come back? Are they in the, the, the language that you're proposing that would make them now approvable? I'm just kind of trying to think about how many opportunities there are for this, you know, with the six feet, yada, yada, to have ATMs. Does that make sense?
Yes. No, those particular ones were not in recesses that were six feet deep.
Okay, thank you, Robin.
Commissioners, any other comments or is there a motion? Okay. I, I slipped on my, there. Commissioner Jones, I think, had her hand raised.
Oh, sure. And then Lee, Commissioner Fitz, feel free to jump in after me. I'll show your hands. But I mean, on this particular case, again, I, I agree with Commissioner Mayhaw, and I think everyone, you know, don't like it where it is currently. But I am inclined to the new language in these very specific instances. And there is some depth to work with. They're not disturbing any, disturbing and, and, you know, removing any historic features of a building. You know, if it's pushed back somewhere, I'm inclined to, to be all right with this one. But, you know, I'll hear from other commissioners what you think on this.
So you're not making a motion yet, Commissioner?
Correct.
Okay, Commissioner Fitz?
Oh, I was just going to say, I mean, because that first floor is pushed back and isn't historic, I guess it seems like there could, could be an opportunity to move it. But I think based on what we've discussed on the previous case, I think we're just trying, we need to decide if we want ATMs on Broadway or not. Or?
On the front facade.
Yeah, on the front facade. You know, I'm wondering if there's a language that could be added. You know, the condition that we saw in the previous case on Third Avenue, the ATM, while it was along Third Avenue, it was, it was on a wall that was perpendicular to, you know, tucked back in the recess and didn't face out to Third. It faced into the alcove. And so I feel like that's a way to like tuck these away and hide them so that you're not seeing it, seeing it front on from a street. That's just, that's not really answering a question here, but it's just a thought for, for moving forward. If the, if the ATM could, you know, face the inside of an alcove, so you're not seeing it, whether it's recessed back or not.
Commissioner Price? Keep your thoughts, Commissioner Fitz. Just make sure Commissioner Price has got a moment here.
Thank you. I, I totally understand where Commissioner Fitz is going with this. And I think, as Commissioner Stewart said, we do need to have a larger conversation about this issue when we don't have a case before us. That said, we, we didn't approve the revised interpretation. This machine does not, is not, does not fall within what's allowed of the current interpretation. So, I mean, I'm all for having a discussion of how to, how to do this going forward, but I think right now the matter before, before us is pretty cut and dry about what the guidelines allow.
Yes, Commissioner Fitz?
Yeah, I totally agree with Commissioner Price. I don't see with, with us not approving the new, you know, interpretation. I don't see how we could approve this ATM to remain.
I, I lean to your thoughts, commissioners. Want you to have that as well. Okay, so are you ready to make a motion? Commissioner Price?
Yes, with respect to 305 Broadway, I recommend the ATM be removed according to current guidelines on Broadway Historic District.
There's a motion? Commissioner Mayhaw?
Second.
All right. First and a second. Any other discussion? Otherwise, I'll take your own call.
I have a question. This is Robin. And does that include removal within 60 days? Or did you want a different timeframe?
Commissioner Mayhaw? And Price?
Well, as far, I, I have a little bit of a problem since we only let that other, we only gave that other person 30 days. But, you know, and so I'm fine with the 60 days. But if we wanted to be consistent with our last, our last vote, we'd say 30. So I'd like to hear what other members of the commission have to say about that.
Commissioner Price, do you have a comment on that?
I'm fine with revising it to 30 days as well.
Okay. All right. So you've made the motion, and Commissioner Mayhaw made the second. And we'll, we'll note that as 30 days versus 60 days. Anything else? Okay, I see no other hands raised. I will take the roll call. Yes or no? Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? No. Okay, Commissioner Mayhaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
All right. We had one opposed, so we duly noted. Thank you. I would propose a, we are now hour and a half into our meeting. I propose a five-minute break if possible. Are you commissioners okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Vice Chair. Okay, thank you. IT, we've got a five-minute break. And, and public, thank you for your patience as well. Then the project.
Good afternoon. 1814 Shelby is for a new outbuilding at the rear of the lot to be used as a detached accessory dwelling unit. The applicant requests a setback determination for the left side setback as the proposed location is on an existing concrete slab on the side property line. The applicant requests zero side, street-side setback, which does not meet base zoning or the side street setback of the existing house and would create an unsafe condition. On a lot with alley access, any additional access is generally required to be from the alley and not from the public street. Metro Public Works has told MHCC staff that they would not support the driveway as proposed. The proposed square footage and ridge height meet the design guidelines. Staff recommends that the eve height not exceed 10 feet from the tallest point of grade on which the outbuilding is built. The applicant has told staff that he agrees to the conditions that we're recommending for revising the dormers. In summary, staff recommends approval with the conditions that the street-side setback is at least 12 feet, matching the side setback of the historic home, and the rear alley setback increased to at least five feet. The outbuilding is accessed from the alley and not the side street. The dormers are revised to have at least a 212 roof slope and at least 50% glazing. The eve height shall not exceed 10 feet from grade. And the staff shall have final review of windows, doors, garage door roofing color, and cladding. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposed application will meet the appropriate sections of the Lachlan Springs Design Guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Is the applicant on the line? And would you like to speak? So say your name and address, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, hi. My name is Sarah Cox. My father, Emo Holloway, is the applicant and lives at 1814 Shelby Avenue. We are happy to comply with the 10-foot eve height from grade. That's not a problem. My parents bought this house in 1985 and have been living in East Nashville for over 35 years. They were instrumental in helping pass the Lachlan Springs Conservation Overlay back in the 90s. So we are just requesting a variance for the outbuilding access. Yes, there'll be access from the garage door on the side street, but also access with inside the, in, taking internally into the lot towards the primary residence. We are asking that we not be required to put a alley access on it to limit entry and visit along the alley for safety and security reasons. We are also seeking a variance to use the existing garage foundation that you can see in the image there. This was a garage from the home. It was a garage on the 1950s sandboard maps and was allowed to fall into disrepair in the 1980s by the previous owner. So we understand that there's nothing to grandfather in because the structure is no longer there. But we are hopeful that we can use this existing foundation that is historic to rebuild the garage where it was, where it had been prior to falling down. And we are willing to install mirrors and other safety precautions should the commission require that.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. And also, thank you to your family for spearheading some of this preservation in the area. Excuse me. Ms. Ziegler, have we received any public comment?
We have not.
Okay. We will close public hearing on 1814 Shelby. Commissioners, under discussion? Or have questions for the applicant or staff? Commissioner Jones?
Sure, Commissioner Jones. I'm with the great deal of information that staff has given us. And they're talking with Public Works and, you know, the, the situation of the day with current, you know, driving on that street and everything, how it is. I'm, I'm inclined to agree. I'm inclined to agree with all of staff's recommendations for this project.
Commissioner Price?
I agree with Caitlin. You know, those old garages that were built right on the corners like that at an alley and a street, that's really a dangerous situation, and I totally understand why Public Works does not allow them now, and why I don't think we should endorse that kind of construction either. So, that's, that's my comment.
Okay. Any other comments, Commissioners? Is there a motion? And we do have the recommendation summary back on the screen? Commissioner Price and Commissioner Mayhaw. First, Commissioner Price?
I move, with respect to 1814 Shelby Avenue, I move to approve with staff recommendations.
Commissioner Mayhaw?
I second that motion.
Okay, there's a first and a second. Are there any other discussions? If not, I will take the roll call. Yes or no? Commissioner, Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Price, did you have another comment?
No.
Okay, sorry, I just looked at your hand. Vice Chair Stewart, let's say that again.
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We are now moving on to 1401 Roberts. And for the public, again, to call the number on the screen, and 629-255-1911. And Mr. Hoffman will present the project.
1401 Roberts Avenue.
Commissioner Fitz?
I just, I just had a quick question, and maybe I missed this. Did we skip an agenda item? McFerrin?
I will let Robin refer to that.
I believe you have an old agenda, it was revised not to include McFerrin.
Okay, thank you.
Let me clarify that too as well, Commissioner Fitz. I did look on the agenda online, and 723 McFerrin was not on that agenda, so the public was aware of that as well. Just to clarify.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So the current project is an application for a new detached accessory dwelling unit at the rear of the lot. The proposed DADU is 21 feet 11 inches from the finished floor height, but the ridge height of the primary building is only 18 feet 2 inches from finished floor. The eve height is proposed at 10 foot 10 inches, which is 10 inches taller than the maximum allowed. The application meets the remaining design guidelines with the usual conditions of review of materials. In summary, staff recommends approval with the conditions that the ridge height is reduced to be no taller than 18 feet 2 inches, and the eve height reduced to no taller than 10 feet, and that staff approve the masonry windows, doors, and garage doors prior to purchase and installation. With these conditions, staff finds that the project meets Section 2B1H of the Eastwood Design Guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Is the applicant online? Yes, I see your hand raised, Mr. Ron Tharp?
Correct. Good afternoon.
Please confirm your, your name and address.
My name is Ron Tharp at 1401 Roberts Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee, 37206.
Thank you, sir.
So I thank the Commission for their time. The project before you, to me, is the perfect reason why zoning guidelines are used and not hard rules. From the very beginning, our goal has been to provide a long-term rental unit and additional apartment, parking. Although not required, our very first action was to consult with our neighbors regarding site layout and architectural design. We are simply seeking the same opportunity as our neighbors while maintaining the character of our neighborhood. We are on a prominent corner. It is in the middle of the 1100 block of 14th Avenue where this, where this unit will be built. We are one block away from Public, Starbucks, and a Chase Bank and 14 townhomes that are under construction. This development will have 219 parking places while Public alone has announced 125 employees. Additionally, there is no public parking on this section of Greenwood, 14th, Roberts, in front of our home, leaving only Sharp Avenue as a place for parking. Staff's recommendations of reducing the height of our structure 3 foot 9 inches is not a minor change, that is a complete redesign, forcing us into either a one-story structure, one-sided roof, or a flat roof. Although we're allowed to do this, I do not feel it will contribute to the architectural character of the neighborhood nor my property, which was built around 1930. If I don't want to look at it, I can't imagine that my neighbors would want to look at it either. Our lot, our home is built at a, at a sea-level elevation of 519 feet. The back right corner of our property drops to 513 feet. So even if, even if we construct this, we will still be lower than our primary home by sea level. This Commission has already granted a variance just a few doors down at 417 Roberts Avenue based on the exact same issue. It was a very low primary dwelling, and the Commission approved a 23-foot, I believe, was the height, if you will see the bottom of page five on the 417 Roberts permit. Additionally, at the end of April, at the end of our street, multiple height variances were granted by the Commission for development of the Hobson UMC site located at 716 Greenwood. We aren't seeking special treatment, simply the same discretion that leads to smart planning, discretion that this Commission has already shown willingness to exercise. If we reduce the height, given the prominence of our lot, a single-story structure with a 1,000-square-foot footprint would not complement the architectural character of our neighborhood. A single-story structure would also force the neighbors behind us, whose setback is inches off of the alley, to look at a roof from an entire side of their home. A flat, a flat-roof two-story structure would not complement the architectural neighborhood of our character, architectural character of our neighborhood either. We also question staff's method of measurements. Staff is measuring from finished floor of the primary home, not average grade. This doesn't follow staff's own precedents. If granted the variance, the structure will be lower than every other primary home around us other than our own, by both height and sea level. The variance we are seeking would be a non-issue if Historic would move forward with the consolidation plan, which has been in public hearing for well over a year, and as of today has been placed on indefinite hold, at least until this body meets again in person. Under existing ordinances, we could literally double the square, the footprint of our home, extend the roof height to 22 feet, and then build the identical garage with no issue from Historic. But we're not seeking an extraordinary plan. We're currently not seeking to build the Taj Mahal. We just want a garage and an apartment. In closingly, this design was not hastily put together. Impacts on our neighbors, the community, and the architectural character of the neighborhood was carefully considered. It is our hope that you agree and will grant this variance for all of the reasons stated above. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Eglor, did we receive any public comment?
We have not.
Okay. Since we did not receive any public comment, we will close public hearing. And the Commission will have discussion. Either questions to the applicant or to staff. I see that Commissioner Johnson has her hand raised.
Yes, I have a question to the staff. Seems like previously 1417 was, 417 was granted the variance. Could you explain to me the rationale for the reason to grant the variance to approve probably same roof height of the outbuilding to main house?
Commissioner, I don't know the specifics of that case, I'm afraid.
Okay, but the fact of the matter is, that address is already issued a building permit, so it is approved. Am I understanding correct?
We would need to research that for you. This is Robin. I did want to make one, and this sounds picky, but what we're talking about is not a variance. That is something that is approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. You are simply reviewing the projects based on your guidelines.
Oh, thank you for the clarification, because I was wondering, you know, comparing 417, the permit and application on variance, and this 1401 seems like a pretty similar situation, so I was wondering the background. Okay, I will listen to other Commissioners' comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Just another comment for Commissioner Johnson. I know these things do come up where we are asked those questions of why was this approved and how is this not approved? And we are, this Commission has functioned pretty much when we see something in front of us and it's specifically to that project, there could have been some, some item or some, you know, that was in question and discussed about. So we don't always look at them as we approve one, then we approve another. So just, just a general comment.
You?
You're welcome. Any other Commissioners, please? Another one of those interesting projects to review, and I think our Commissioners are doing that. Commissioner Price?
Yes. I am persuaded by the staff recommendation. I'm looking at the DADU ordinance language, which very clearly says, in no uncertain terms, that a DADU height shall not exceed the height of the principal structure, and a maximum eve height of 10 feet for a single-story dwelling. So I don't really see where there's a case to be made that we should, in the case before us right now, vary from that language, under our responsibilities on this Commission. So that's, I'm happy to hear from other Commissioners who may have other insights there for me to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. I also read that on page nine of that project. Vice Chair, do you have any comments?
Madam Chairman, I understand and appreciate the arguments of the applicant, but I think Commissioner Price is right on it. And with that in mind, I think with respect to 1401 Roberts Avenue, I would move that we approve that project with staff recommendations.
There's a motion, is there a second? Commissioner Price?
Second.
All right. There is a first, there's a second. Are there any other questions? I see some hands raised, I just want to make sure we have everybody answered. Commissioner Jones, did you have a comment, or?
No, I was going to second.
Okay, very good. I will call the roll. Yes or no, please? Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhaw?
Yes.
And Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We are moving on to 1103 Montrose, and again, for the public on the screen, and also the number two call is 629-255-1911, and Ms. Baldock will do our presentation.
1103 Montrose is a one-story full Victorian frame house that was constructed prior to 1914. It contributes to the historic character of the Waverly Belmont Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. In 2017, MHCC approved an application for an addition and an outbuilding. The addition was constructed, but the building, the outbuilding was not. Although the addition is two stories because it takes advantage of the grade, the historic house at the front is a one-story house. The lot is zoned R8, but is under 8,000 square feet. Typically, a second residential unit is not allowed on lots less than 8,000 square feet. However, in June 2020, the Board of Zoning Appeals determined that the lot could have a DADU on it, and the proposed outbuilding that in DADU that they are proposing a DADU, and the proposal does meet all the setbacks. Here are the elevations and floor plans. The structures, the structure is two stories with an eve height of over 18 feet and a ridge height of 25 feet. Again, the historic house is one-story in height, although the 2017 addition is two stories. For the sake of new garages and DADUs, MHCC looks at the height and scale of the historic house. Therefore, founds that the proposed two-story DADU with eve heights several feet taller than the eve height of the historic house does not meet the design guidelines nor the DADU ordinance. The DADU ordinance states, quote, "The detached accessory dwelling shall maintain a proportional mass, size, and height to ensure that is not taller than the principal structure in the lot. The detached accessory dwelling height shall not exceed the height of the principal structure as measured to the eve line, with a maximum eve height of 10 feet for a single story and 17 feet for a two-story detached accessory dwellings." Staff therefore recommends disapproval of the project, finding that the proposed outbuilding's scale, eve height, and roof form do not meet Section 3H of the Design Guidelines.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Baldock. Is the applicant on the line? If so, please state your name and address. We, we don't hear you right now. Is that Alyssa and Douglas Graham? All right, we're going to try that one more time.
Hi, can you?
Oh, you just, you just muted yourself. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is Doug Graham. How are you? My name is Doug Graham, I live at 1103 Montrose Avenue, that's Nashville, Tennessee, 37204.
Thank you. We will welcome your comments.
Okay, well.
I think that our, this is Alyssa Graham as well. That's also my address, and I think that our contractor, Beau, is also on the line.
Okay, were you, one moment, please. Okay, that wasn't on this case. So your contractor, did you say, is on the line, or your architect?
He's, he needs the number, he seems to have gotten off of the phone call somehow.
He is muted. Is that Mr. West?
Yeah.
Mr. West, you are muted. There you go, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Name an address, please, sir.
My address is 5029 Stillwood Drive, that's 37220 Nashville. That's 37220 Nashville.
Okay.
And we are proposing this mainly, this design mainly because the structure, taking advantage of the grade and taking advantage of the structure, seemed to work to produce the two-story addition. And we are therefore trying to get the DADU in the same, I feel like it is a little bit of a gray area, especially since the eve height of the addition was approved. We aren't even close to that eve height. I know the rule states 10 feet, but I would consider this being a two-story at some point. I know the structure, it seems to be a little bit of a gray area with it being the original historic being a one-story and the addition being a two-story. So hence why we propose what we propose. Trying to take advantage of the full two-story DADU. From around the neighborhood, there are consistent ones that are two-story. Now, I know those are probably two-story historic homes, but right next door, before the overlay was done as well, there is a DADU that is actually much, much higher than the proposed, what we're even proposing. So with the grade, taking advantage of the grade and along with the addition, we are proposing this DADU at this time.
Okay, we may have questions for you in a minute.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Ziegler, have we had any public comment?
No, there are no callers.
Okay. With that said, we will close public hearing. And commissioners will either have questions for the applicant or yes, or the staff. Commissioner John?
Um, yeah, so again, I'm inclined to go with staff recommendation on this due to the fact that, again, it's a very clear DADU, just like the last case. I mean, it's a very clear DADU ordinance here regardless of the fact that there's a two-story addition on the back, which again, you know, may or may not have, you know, that may or may not have been approved with this commission. You know, every case is a new case. And so taking that completely off the table and only looking at the historic house, I just, I agree with staff recommendation for disapproval of this project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think these cases are clearly black and white. If you follow the historical zoning overlay requirement and DADU requirement, I think staff recommendation is 100%. And I eager to support a staff recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Fitz?
Oh, I was just going to say the same thing in support of Commissioner Jones and also now in support of Commissioner Johnson. I think the language, you know, while it may seem, while the, I guess, the addition, you know, may cloud the decision for the client in the, in the guidelines, it clearly states that we have to regard the principal structure, which is the historic structure. So I'm in complete agreement with the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart.
Madam Chairman, with respect to 1103 Montrose, I move for disapproval, finding that the proposed building scale, eve height, and roof form do not meet the design guidelines for the Waverly Belmont Neighborhood.
Thank you. There is a motion, and Commissioner Mahal?
Second.
All right, there's a first and a second. Are there any other discussions? Otherwise, we will take the roll. I see no hands raised. Yeah, your name, yes or no, clearly. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We move on to 1407 Ordway Place. And again, for the public to call is on the screen and also 629-255-1911. And Ms. Sajid will present the project.
So this is an application to construct a one and one-half story infill and detached accessory dwelling unit on a vacant lot. The proposed infill meets all of the design guidelines for infill, including height and scale and.
Melissa, you're.
Yes.
You're glitching out there, sorry.
Okay. The proposed infill meets all of the design guidelines for infill, including height and scale, setback in rhythm of spacing with the proposed setback determination on the side street. Here are the streetscape and section provided by the applicant. And I'm sorry, we can go back to the first slide. This had in here that there was a setback determination on the side street that, that is a typo. This is an interior lot and the proposed infill and DADU meet all of the setbacks. All right, next slide, please. So here are a streetscape and section provided by the applicant. And here are the front and right side elevations and the rear and left side elevations. The DADU also meets all of the criteria of the design guidelines as well as the ordinance. And here are some context photos of houses to either side and across the street from the site. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with conditions as outlined in the staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sajid. Applicant is on the line? And if so, please say your name and address.
This is David Baird, Building Ideas Architecture. We're the representative for the applicant. And my address is 5007 Wyoming Avenue, Nashville. And we agree with all of the recommendations. And we also would like to thank Melissa for helping us go through the review process.
Very well. We appreciate your cooperation also in collaboration with the staff. Any other ones of staff? Who else is on the line? I don't think we're clear on that.
Unknown number.
Okay. It's an unknown number. I'm just going to, wait, maybe you should call back. Okay, we do not see that very clearly. We'll give you a moment if you want to call back in. And I'm going to say that number one more time. I'm sorry. It's not clear. Okay, we see a number, but we don't hear you very clearly. Give us one moment, please. We are taking public, I mean, from the applicant comments, please. Okay, hello?
This is David, yes, this is David Baird, the representative for the applicant. Did you have questions?
Okay, right, right, right. Well, I was asking whether I had other names listed as applicants that may speak on this project. Just wanted to be sure we had caught everyone that's representing the applicant.
I, the applicant's online here, Haley Bass.
Hello?
Okay, please say your name and address.
Hi, my name's Haley, and our address is 1400 Fifth Avenue North.
Okay, are you the, are you the owner?
I am not the owner, no, I'm not. I'm the builder's representative.
Okay. Just clarifying, yes, we welcome your thoughts.
I'm sorry.
We welcome your thoughts. Did you have any?
None at this time. David's been great in addressing all of you guys' recommendations, and he's been a fellow to work with and a great representative for us.
Okay, I think we did hear that from Mr. Baird that the applicant was in agreement with all the staff recommendations. So we do have that duly noted.
Yes.
And now I'm going to ask Ms. Ziegler if there are any public comments. And please put your phone on mute. We're getting some feedback on that. Ms. Bass? Thank you.
No, there are no callers.
Okay, Ms. Ziegler has informed that there are no public, other public comments. So we will close public hearing. Someone does not have their phone muted?
Oh, you can't.
Okay, I believe we're getting some feedback on somebody's call. You'll have to put that on your mute.
It's the applicant.
Okay, there we go. Thank you so much. Appreciate that technical, technical issues here. So we did close public hearing, and the commission will discuss questions or comments. Commissioner Stewart?
Madam Chairman, with respect to 1407 Ordway Place, I recommend approval with staff recommendations.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Mahal?
Second.
All right, there's a first and a second. Any other questions? Otherwise, I will take the roll call. All right, here we go. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Looks like we are on to our last project, and that will be 1208 Seventh Avenue North. And again, for the public to call is on the screen and 629-255-1911. And I understand there might be a recusing, and I'm going to wait for that. I guess Mr. Hoffman is going to be presenting the project.
1208 Seventh Avenue North is an application for infill on the site where the historic home on the lot was demolished following tornado damage. The site is located within the National Register District Development Zone. The rear addition remained intact. The new structure will be attached to this portion, as you can see in the site plan indicating the existing addition. The applicant is proposing a one-story, single-family residence attached to the remaining rear addition. The proposed new construction is a reinterpretation of the historic home. The project meets the design guidelines and is similar in massing to the lost historic building. In summary, staff recommends approval with the conditions that staff approve the finished floor height in the field, that staff review materials prior to purchase and installation. The HVAC and utilities are located behind the house or on a side beyond the midpoint, and staff have final review of any proposed appurtenances. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposed infill meets Section 3 for new construction in the Germantown Historic Preservation zoning overlay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. And this is definitely a, yeah, tornado was so sad. Is the applicant on the line?
I am. This is Scott Hinton Architects, 508 Houston, Nashville, Tennessee.
Can you say which architects again, please?
Tuck Hinton Architects.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
And we are in complete agreement with the guidelines.
Very good. Thank you for working with staff as well. Ms. Ziegler, do we have any public comments?
There's no public comments.
Okay. Close public hearing. Mr. Jones? Oh, I think Vice Chair Stewart might have had his hand up.
I do. Madam Chairman, with respect to 1208 Seventh Avenue North, I move for approval with staff recommendations.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I was going to do the same. So I second that motion. I'd just like to, you know, say thank you to the team and staff for working with us. You know, the, this project was created, you know, due to a very unfortunate event. And so we'd just like to, again, extend our sympathies to everyone affected by this. But thank you for bringing us such a great project to rebuild your home, so.
Yes, duly noted. There's a motion, there's a second. Any other discussions? Otherwise, I'll take the roll call. All right, Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
And Commissioner Price?
Yes.
One moment, please. I think you skipped Fitz.
You just need to explain that.
Yes, I was just holding thought on that. Commissioner Fitz, would you like to chime in here?
Oh, yes, I was just, I'm not voting on this property because I know the owner and just wanted to remove myself from, from, wanted to recuse myself from it. Thanks.
Okay, duly noted, Commissioner. And there you have your answer, Commissioner Jones. All right, I think that is, concludes our projects for the day. And we now have, next on the agenda is the election of the chair and vice chair. Nominees are on the table and discussion.
Who are the nominees on the table? Commissioner Jones, hello?
Well, yeah, it's kind of, I guess, I don't, I have to be reminded of the rules or who,
you know, again, I don't know people's terms and, you know, all of that. Or is it self-nominating or?
Yeah, there's no real rules. Anyone can nominate anyone they wish. We do this every two years. We used to do it every year, but now it's every two years. You have two positions to fill, the chair and vice chair.
And what's the term on that, Robin? Every two, I'm sorry, every two years, right, right. Commissioner Mahal?
Can you serve consecutive terms?
Yes, you can.
Okay, in that case, I'd like to nominate, let's see, I'd like to nominate Manet Bell to be chair and Cyril Stewart to continue as vice chair.
The nomination is on the floor. Is there a second to the nominations or other comments? I don't, we do have to vote on a first and a second as well. So I guess it's under discussion, so this would be, any other nominations?
Let's go ahead and get, this is Alex Dickerson from Legal. Let's go ahead and get a second on that motion, and then some discussion can be had.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dickerson. All right, Commissioner Price?
I'd like to offer a hearty second to that recommendation.
And thank you. All right, there's a, okay, Ms. Jones?
Oh, I guess I'd just like to hear from Commissioner Bell or Chair Bell and Vice Chair Stewart that they would like to be renominated.
That is a good question. I am going to defer to the vice chair first. I am going to defer to the vice chair first, and then I will chime in. Vice Chair Stewart?
I will be honored to serve as vice chair under Chairman Bell.
I too will be honored and humbled to continue serving with the vice chair and with this very, very capable commission. I must say, I am mentored by all of you, and I have learned so much in the last couple of years. It's kind of hard to tell how many years I've been on the commission. But I continue to hold up the staff as the job that they have done, especially during this COVID time where we have met now, I believe, four times virtually. And again, just amazing commissioners on the Metro Historic Zoning Commission. So again, I just want to say I am honored and I'm humbled to serve and continue to serve. So I think we will take roll call. Mr. Dickerson, is that correct now?
Yes.
Thank you so much. All right. So the nominations have been that the chair will continue to be Manette Bell, and the vice chair will continue to be Cyril Stewart. And we now will take the roll call, and I guess we take our own roll call. So Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, thank you. I'm going to go back to Commissioner Fitz. I'm sorry. Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
And Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I think that is, again, concludes our meeting agenda. And Robin, is there anything else? Public can now exit from the meeting?
If they'd like, because the meeting is officially adjourned. But now we are going to continue with a continuing education session. As you may remember, we need to get at least.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.